Okay.
It's all good.
All righty, perfect, thank you.
Hey, good evening, the date is August 26, 2025, and the time is 6:31. Hereby called to order the workshop of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Florida. Sierra, would you please take the role?
Yes, Mayor Keith Keo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines, absent. Councilmember Amy Jo Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Judith Feig.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Radzick.
Here.
City Manager Michael Heine.
Here.
Sergeant at Arms Chief Sean Ramsey.
Yeah.
City Attorney Anita Garassi-Cover, absent. And Deputy City Clerk Sierra Bender, here.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Agenda item one, review of proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Mr. Heine?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having this budget workshop. The intent of the budget workshop is to really flush out any ideas, concepts, or directives from the council before we go for first read and second read and the final budget adoption. As you know, over the period of the last eight months or so, we've been having monthly workshops for each department, so you can become familiar with their operations and the budget detail and supporting documents behind each department. And Jim is now not getting his budget amendment, kidding, we're working on the clicker. So what we're going to do today, and what's in your packet, is some higher elevation summary, along with all the details for all the departments. You're also going to have one-on-one meetings with Pam and April later this week. As a reminder, we had workshops, you know, March, April, May, June, and July. The maximum millage rate that the council set was 6.0. The existing mill rate is 5.5. And again, by setting the maximum mill rate, you cannot go higher than that. You can lower it, but you cannot exceed 6.0 from this point forward. We're having our budget workshop tonight, our first public hearing is September 3, where the tentative maximum mill rate can be adjusted and adopted. And then your final public hearing is September 15 for the final millage rate in the budget. Next slide, we go through what does that mean for the average homeowner? And you can see that with a homestead, the annual impact would be $71 or $5.96 per month if you went to the 6.0. And that would be the delta. Without the homestead, the delta would be $8.05 per month. This is another way of reflecting that, so you can see different taxable values with the mean and median at the bottom, reflecting what we just kind of went over for different The other graphic we like to display is how property taxes relate to the total budget. We are primarily focused on the general fund, because that's where property revenues, property tax revenues go to fund general operations. And you can see that just public safety operating expenditures, non-fire assessment revenues, consume almost all of the property tax. So again, public safety operating represents 12.8, .6 million, whereas your total revenue expected from property taxes is 13.364. Here's the good news, because, and when I say good news, it's just kind of a figurative expression, it really is just what is. But I want to compare, because people are always like, whoa, you've got so much new value, mostly driven by new growth. You've had some commercial properties now hit the tax roll, because there's a lag from when they get their CFO to when it becomes realized revenue to the city. And you've had a steady stream of new residential, fueling much of the increase of 15%. So that represents about 1.62 million as an increase for the general fund. Other revenues increased 13%. General fund revenue for utility gas tax, 64,000 for franchise fees. And that's representative of growth as well. You can anticipate that that, as you get more houses, you get more revenues from the franchise fees from utility providers. And you have 162,000 increase in revenue from intergovernmental revenue, representing the growth in the region as well as the state. So total good news, 1.915 on the plus side. Now what we call bad news, or just, again, facts that bear against that. So when you look at personnel services are increasing 1.3 million, 708 is salaries in FICA, based on a representative 4% COLA. 236,000 in general fund expenditures for retirement, mostly driven by the increase in the FRS contribution from 32.79 to 35.19. 318,000 increase in general fund expense for health insurance, representing a 14.8% increase. 29,000 increase in general fund expenditures for other insurance. And then 57,000 increase general fund for the wellness incentive. What that wellness incentive is, again, is as you know, historically, the city has not charged employees who are under single coverage for any health insurance. And we're starting to charge them $30 per pay period, starting in October 1. So that represents $720 annualized to the employees. What we are doing, working with our insurance providers, is to develop a wellness program where employees who participate can receive up to $500 back by simply going to classes, downloading the app to begin. And we're expecting to give that $500 right around Black Friday. And then, after that, they would be given an annual program of things they would have to do to enroll in wellness initiatives, which would hopefully lower our premiums long-term, and that's been demonstrated in other industries. Miscellaneous and other source revenue decreased 1.5, you know, the health insurance rebate of 172. And then we are decreasing the carryforward by 1.396, which is a non-recurring revenue stream. Transfer of positions from the CRA to the general fund, and this was the direction from the CRA board in the adoption of their budget last night, is to remove partial compensation for a police officer and half of a code compliance officer from the CRA, to focus those resources on strategic initiatives focused around infrastructure. So that shift, again, goes to the general fund, you know, so you're looking at slightly So the total bad news, or the total strains or stressors, is 2.9. So you can see, compared to the good news, there is a deficit position. What we did then is provide a series of versions, based on conversations that we've had over the last several months. Existing levels of service A represents basically the status quo, no new services, and you can see on the personnel side, the assumptions. Some of the big assumptions is that dispatch would be sourced out to the county, representing $120,000 savings this next fiscal year, and it assumes the fire assessment. So you can see that we are also assuming a $350,000 carryforward. So that would be non-recurring revenues that are carried forward because of expenses under budget, that would then be used to fund general operating, and that would be a mill rate of 5.6.
How many employees?
177 currently. There is budgeted a part-time IT position, and this is no growth in personnel, for like no extra police officer, you'll see that later on in the presentation. The second option, we're calling version B, and this is the same as version A, except not outsourcing dispatch. So then you can start seeing the mechanism of how this works. You can see the mill rate would go up to 5.65. So again, for every tenth of a millage rate, it represents about revenue of 250,000. So if 120,000 has to be reabsorbed into the general fund, the mill rate would then go up .05. And that helps you look at different options and different variables. Version C is, again, the same as version A, with the removal of the $350,000 carryforward. So this is what, I know there was a lot of conversations with the Charter Review Committee, as well as internal conversations we've had, about a structurally balanced budget. So the city is required by law, and has always had, a balanced budget, but we have relied sometimes on non-recurring revenues to fund recurring expenses. Most governments do, the federal government does, the state certainly does, and sweeps non-recurring funds to fund general operating. And it is not an uncommon approach. But if you wanted to be structurally balanced, you would then eliminate that 350,000 from a revenue side of a carryforward, and have to fund that through a millage rate increase, which would take your millage to 5.7395. Also, it should be noted, I don't think we have it on these sheets, but the reserve is represented in these versions, I think at 15.6%. So your requirement is 15%, so this is slightly over your minimal requirements. If you went to a structurally balanced budget, I believe it's 16.3%, but slightly over 16%. And then finally, we have the version D, which represents an enhanced level of service. Again, all of these are with minimal changes in service represented to the public. The enhanced level simply uses some alternatives. You can see in the middle, where there's the light green shade, for example, a new police officer salary and equipment, fully loaded, if you will, is 250,000, which, again, represents about a tenth of a mill rate. Public Works Street Maintenance Position, and a Workflow Coordinator in Public Works. Capital, you can see, we have trails, sidewalks, hurricane reserve, and there's a 350,000 carryforward. So again, these are just variables that the council needs to give direction to during final budget adoption processes, if you want investment in certain areas that we have not previously invested. And there's a list of things like conservation, road maintenance, we have 300,000, trails and sidewalks, like I said, 300,000, and then a hurricane reserve. But those are policy decisions, these are just placeholders representing options. And then next slide is really just the budget process calendar, again, just to remind where we're at and what the next two steps are. Again, we have representatives of most departments in the audience, if you have specific questions, you were provided all the budget detail, Pam and April are here to also answer any questions that you may have tonight. Recognizing that, again, you have one-on-one meetings with them, if there's some fine-tuning. But again, these are the options that have basically been on my whiteboard for several months, and we've had conversations about. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions?
So when I was looking through the budget, I had a couple of questions. Are we able to pay for the code enforcement officer from permit fees?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Carroll, what we had talked about is adding a position in the clerk's office, that was going to do the lean reviews. Whether or not we fund that position, or partially a code enforcement officer, we will be coming forward, as you know, I think right now lean reviews are $25. Most other governmental agencies are 75, so we will be bringing forward that through an ordinance.
Okay.
But to answer your question specifically, someone is going to need to be doing that work. Right now, we are looking to fund that through a temp, because existing staff in code enforcement and development services have been tasked with that.
When's the last time that we shopped around for insurance, for health insurance, dental, vision?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Carroll, Deo can come up and answer that, but we do that annually, as you know, we're part of a pool that looks at different carriers and programs. And in fact, there is a switch this year to our insurance options.
Good afternoon, the mayor, members of the council. So to answer your question, that process is every year, an open enrollment. Some are much more detailed, years are much more detailed than others. We have gone to market this year and looked at several different rates. As you know, insurance rates are really determined by a number of different things. One, of course, the market, number two, the number of claims that you get each year. Unfortunately for us, this is a pretty bad year, you saw almost 15% increase, and that is as a result of some of the major health issues. We're dealing, whether it's a cardiac issue, cancer, diabetes, neurological issues, we have some of these issues in our population, which is really driving, whether it's the employees or their family member that are covered with the insurance. So we do look at it every year, we're cognizant of it. We are part of a consortium through Brown and Brown, and what that does is, you know, strengthen your numbers, so there are many different cities that participate in this program. So it allows us, when we go to market, to have a very expansive group, which gives us some benefits. One of the things that we are looking at and kind of experimented with this year is to add an health savings account, along with, we offer three plans currently, one's a copay plan, one's a $500 deductible plan, we have a $1,500 deductible plan, but we replaced that and we add a higher deductible plan with a health savings account, trying to incentivize it by giving the employee $1,000 each calendar year, it's pre-tax, you can roll it over from year to year, it's a saving, it's a good option, if that takes off, that could potentially save us some money long-term.
Okay, thank you, Deo. Also, we have a lot of employees that drive city vehicles and live outside the city. I know other places, for instance, my husband works for another government agency, and they get charged per mile, once they leave their jurisdiction. Do we do anything like that, to recoup some of that, like especially for like maintenance and mileage on the vehicles and whatnot?
We do follow the IRS regulations as it relates, sorry, we do follow the IRS regulations as it relates to mileage, so every month, the reports are submitted, and we do apparel deductions based on those reports.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, that's it for right now. I did want to say that I am in favor of keeping dispatch in-house, and also for future, I was wondering if maybe we could look at zero-based budgeting for, in the future, I think that's a good way to go, or maybe council, we can discuss that.
Ms. Feig?
And as Amy Jo said, it was kind of, I was looking at version B, where we do keep dispatch in-house. It's a small millage increase. I think when we had the discussion about that, I don't know, several weeks ago, and Chief Ramsey put up a beautiful Excel slide, for lack of a better word, and we talked about the step-up that they would do, and what they would be paid if they went to Lake County, and I asked the pointed question, so when we look at year 10, and whatever the salary was, because I don't have that in front of me now, was that more or less than they may currently here? And I think you indicated it would be less. And, thank you, and I appreciate that. I find it troubling that we, for the small savings we would get in this city, I find it troubling that we would take that staff, not all of them would be hired necessarily by Lake County, then we would be either scrambling to find them work within the city, or if they could find a position within the city, or they're scrambling to find a job somewhere. I had somebody say something the other night to me, had nowhere in here, very cavalier, well, they can go to work anywhere, and I said, yes, okay, thank you, uproot your family, your home, and your husband, as the case may be, and that's, that's just not a viable thought. So I feel that, for that reason, and that discussion with you, Chief Ramsey, I feel that version B might be a viable option, so that we don't upset those, those families and cause them hardship. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Radzick?
One observation through each version is the miscellaneous and capital. I know that we've got it broken down, which is great, but again, as discussed last night, I think we would be better off lumping this miscellaneous and capital into strategic initiatives or something along those lines, that way it would give us a little bit more flexibility. Should we not be able to do something with the, with the train depot, then we would have that money to do something somewhere else. So any one of these versions, I would, I would strongly suggest that we would want to do that. Looking at the increases in the millage rate, Mr. Heine, on the first page, you talked about $5.96 per month and 71 for the year. Which millage rate increase was that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Radzick, that's at 6.0.
That's a 6.0, okay. So...
And if I could, excuse me, April or Pam is prepared to show that at any tax rate?
So, yeah, it's only $71 a month, it's only six, I'm sorry, $71 a year, and it's only $6 a month. But it's not only, when you look at a 40% increase in, in order rates, and then another 10% this year, when you're looking at fire assessment, that in my opinion, is not equitably allocated the way that we've currently got in mind. When you look at some of the other increases, you've got to look at the whole ball of wax, and to be honest, I share the sentiments of a lot of people online, which is Groveland's becoming unaffordable. You know, when I bought my house 20 years ago, it was, you know, 1,900 square feet, and it was $210,000. I'm not sure what it would go, today's new market, I know what it is worth escalating, but we're talking about needing a stormwater fee, we're talking about, you know, needing, you know, streets and sidewalks, so, so it's not just $72, is what I'm trying to say. My opinion, no matter which millage rate that we go with, somehow, some way, you've got to figure into it an additional cap, or unfreezing the one that may be frozen. Again, public safety is what you build a city on, and police and fire. I saw a 5.2 million... I saw a 5.2 million carry forward, Mr. Hein, on one of these pages. What is, would that evidently got absorbed into the, into the budget numbers? If we go back to one of the first couple of pages?
Yeah, Councilman Radzick, I'm sorry, you said a 5.2 million?
I saw 5.2 million carry forward.
Carry, go ahead, Pam. The 5.2 million, 5.2 million carry forward, are you asking what does that consist?
I'm actually asking, did that get allocated to new expense items, that carry forward?
No. Well, 300,000 of it did get allocated, 350, excuse me, I'm sorry, 350 got allocated to roads and sidewalks, for roads and sidewalks, but the other is not, has, has not specifically been allocated to any...
So if we had a 5.2 million carry forward, what is the new 15% rate that we're talking about, for something?
In the reserves, we have 4.673.
Okay. So really, of that carry forward, we are reallocating some of it, and then the rest is falling out to a new carry forward, or a 15% reserve? Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, as we've discussed before, whatever one of these rates that we accept, that literally becomes our budget. And line items are important to measure operations by, when in fact, though, like we said, it can be moved around as needed, but the most important thing, again, is at some point, establishing some sort of a sinking fund for infrastructure replacement. And again, it's, it's important that, you know, maybe that becomes, you know, like you've got $800,000 in version A, and we go up to $1.6 million in version B, and version C is the same, but then it goes down. How are we going down unless I didn't add up something right? What is version D's miscellaneous and capital total? Five, three, ten, actually, I should be going up, probably added something wrong. Regardless, any one of those things needs to be accumulated and, again, using it as, as needed and also as a sinking fund. If you're going to do a sinking fund, Mr. Mayor, I think what you have to do is legally, is restricted by the council, so that it can only be used when the county, the city comes back and they says, we need X amount of dollars. So that's what I would do with that.
Very good input. Thank you. I took a different approach because I wanted to take a look at the expense side and, and look at, because sometimes it's not one thing that you're going to find for a million dollars, but it's a lot of 1,000s or 5,000s or 10,000s that will get you where you need to be. Our, our discussion, I'm just saying, first of all, first of all, happy birthday, Pam. Everybody, it's Pam's birthday today. She couldn't think of no better way to spend her birthday than to do a budget.
She begged to have this tonight.
That is rude.
But second, the budget worksheet is the, it was really, really, really helpful. I appreciate it so, so much. But when I was able to go through it, I found things, and I'm just going to talk just right now, because I don't want to go through the whole thing, but it's, it's an example that carries through, like on the meetings in category 30, in 2023, '24, we budgeted $5,000 and only used 2,600. In 2025, we budgeted $5,000 and only used 343, and now we're budgeting $5,000 again. These are the kind of things can we, that I, that on our, in our meetings, I'd like to, to go through. There's other examples in there, discretionary fund, $15,000 in 2023, '24, we used 2,500. $14,600 was budgeted last year, we used zero, and we're budgeting $35,000 again. So, I mean, that's, do we need the full $35,000? I, I know that we want some wiggle room, but that's a lot of wiggle room. And if we can take a different look by budgeting against what 2023 and 2024 were actually, you know, and rather than budget against budget, I think it would be a big savings over the, the whole thing, and I'll be glad to go through that. But again, I'd like us to really spend time on the, on the expense side, so that we really understand what that, that big nut is. Because what I have, of course, there may be things still coming in, right? Because it's, it's a nine plus three or things like that, but some of these are way, you know, when I look at '23, '24, '25, it kind of gives you a history and a pattern. I'd really like to review it from that side.
Here's looking at...
Mine is highlighted like that, too. I was saving it for a meeting.
One of 33, thank you. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's a great point, and staff would certainly love to have those conversations about the line items, just so you know Pam and April, April throughout the year, but they meet before this is presented and put together with each department, including my own. And I know we ask, well, you've only spent 1,200, blah, blah, blah. One thing we don't want to create is a culture where spend it before the end of the year. I think we have great staff in regard to that restraint, because they recognize it's the people's money. But they do go over even like, well, you know, is Ashley going to be traveling more or this or that? Just to give you some examples, but I would expect that when you meet one-on-one, they'll be able to either justify or look at calibrating. And there's always the fallacy of comparison and contrast, because over the years and as staff develops and works with auditors, we, we categorize things differently. So if you ask a department head, Pam's smiling, if you ask a department head where they should bill it, and you ask finance where that expense should go, they're oftentimes not congruent. So there's a back and forth.
Sure, and I'd look forward to that meeting, because I think we'll determine that. But things like gasoline, we put a gasoline storage unit in, and gasoline's going up sky-high on, on this year, and so I wonder where that savings is and, and things like that. So just heads up, I don't want to take up, go line by line through today, but as we, as we get into our meetings, I'll be much more drilling down on the expense side. And, and again, I really, really appreciate this, and I'll appreciate you holding my hand like you always do and taking me through it one by one, but that's where I would be coming from.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think it's worth asking, and what you're looking at is the mayor and council's budget.
Yeah, well, I've gone through all of them. I just use that because we're here.
But you use, but using that number, that's, that's $51,000 more, you know, it's $51,000. Why? If we've only, I mean, the discretionary fund is when someone wants to come in and ask for a donation, and we say, okay, yeah, what do you want and whatever, okay? We haven't had any of that in I don't know how long. So why are we increasing by $20,000, $21,000 from '24, '25? And why are we keeping education and training? And what types of city council education and training are we talking about?
So as far as the discretionary amount going up, we had put the amount in there to cover the huddles for next year that you voted to expand, to have funds there, and it will be moved out of that line as they're happening to the correct account that they belong in.
And I had a question about like, even on that same page, council uniforms, 1,800, there's five of us. I mean, I got two shirts, that's like 60 bucks. I'm saying, I, I think 500 would be sufficient there, and I could be wrong, but that's the kind of thing I was looking at, when I was looking at it.
And any changes that we are coming up with on the expense side, in my opinion, should literally be allocated to the strategic initiatives or reserve account that we talked about. So any type of savings there? Because we're still going to be with a 5.6 or a 5.7, whatever, we're just finding expenses that we don't necessarily agree with, and it would fall out to the, to a, a reserve.
And I would expect to build on that, that if we have stuff like subscriptions and membership, that we've, we've budgeted 7,200, two years ago, used 780, 7,700 last year, we've used $1,800 so far, and we're budgeting another 7,600, that there should be somewhere, this is what that entails, right? Because we're tying up taxpayer money if we really don't have something to justify that with, and, and I'm just using that as an example, you know, that as we go through, and I think it comes back to the zero base, you know, you, you know, some way, when somebody puts in that I want to increase my budget by $20,000, there should be a justification that's going to go to this, and there probably should be a justification that's going to be used in this quarter, that quarter, the next quarter. So we know that we've budgeted correctly, but I'm just, Mr. Hein, I'm just saying, that's where I'm coming from on this, because I don't really feel comfortable on the, on the mileage rate until we really nail down what the expense side is.
When we meet, I'd like to see the details behind all of the account 340, which is professional services. Just having one line item here, you know, of $73,000 for city administration, I'd like to know what that is. I don't need it right now. We're going to meet next week, and, you know, I'm going to bring a piece of birthday cake after the fact, and we can just sit there and...
We bring in birthday cake? Got it.
If you look at the first report, Councilmember Radzick, there's two reports that were provided for you. One was a comparison report, and one was an FY '26 budget only. In the FY '26 budget, you will find the details for each line item within the budget. So it's kind of a, because when you do it in the comparison, we felt like it was a little too busy giving all of that information, right? It gets a little too busy. So the detail is there, but we can certainly break that out specifically for professional services for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we just have to go back to some of those questions, and I don't want to say it's too big, but that's a lot of work. That's a lot of work. It's, it's a lot of detail, and I appreciate it, and I, I just am more of a, as a board member, a top line, and then if I got a question on the line, I'll, I'll go to that. But I appreciate all this, and I can't imagine how many hours are in this book.
And thank you so much for printing it all out and getting it ready for us.
So generally speaking, are we keeping the same level of events?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Radzick, since Steve and Frankie are here, they can come up and talk about that. But yes, we have our, the RAC has made some recommendations, we have our 2026 calendar already, and the answer is basically yes, same number of events. We're changing a couple of things. I think there are two second Fridays that we are doing that pilot expansion with the outside contractor, who basically, it's a zero net cost to the city, because they've got to raise the sponsorships and do other things, and those are during months, I believe, like March, when we have multiple events, including Founder's Day and other things. So instead of heaping one more event on staff, we're going to try that hybrid at Cherry Lake Park. But otherwise, the events are basically the same. What has grown is our endeavor into providing youth sports leagues to start priming youth activities when South Lake Regional Park comes online. So we're doing T-ball and soccer this year.
Would that be, there's a fee for playing Little League, would that be balanced out? Will it be a zero or going to be...
Thank you, Travis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. A little feedback. What was, Mr. Mayor, what was your question specific to leagues? Or just general expenses of the league?
Yes, Stephen, if you can just describe, you know, the, the adoption of two new programs to provide more services to youth, once we found out the Little League is going to focus on travel ball.
Yep.
And then I think what the mayor was asking is there's a registration fee associated with those. Do we anticipate the registration fees to offset the expenses for hiring the coaches or whatever?
Correct. So per the new fiscal year, the, most of the increases are going to be towards officiating and then general maintenance on the fields, whether it be lights, chalk, lining, referees for more leagues. Currently, right now, our leagues are self-sufficient. We base the registration prices off of the estimated costs, whether it be jerseys, staff, referees. I think that's pretty much mostly right now, because we're just doing basketball right now. So as of this moment, we do a post-event budget for each of our leagues, and right now, they're currently self-sufficient, so a net zero, as opposed to increase, or revenue over expenses. So the general increase is anticipation of South Lake Regional, you know, a lot more fields, a lot more programs, so it'll be the, the general upkeep.
I would, I would say in, in the discussions, Mr. Hein, I'm, I'm going to be bringing up the master plans that we have, because I've reviewed the master plans, and in many of our master plans for parks, we're way, we've deviated a long way. There's parks that have been built that aren't in that plan, and there are other things that we've accumulated. So before we start a lot of new stuff, I would say let's really find out where the lines are on the highway. And one example that I'd bring up, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're, we're breaking even on all the leagues, because one of the questions I was going to have is, the gymnasium that we rent is, or we lease is $100,000, and then another $100,000 for, for the electricity and utilities. And we're using it times how many people, and I call that penetration rate, and it, and I would say we should be putting a lot of effort, since we're already spending that money, into filling that thing up more. Whether it's bingo, I don't care what it is, but the number of bodies that goes in there divided by the number of dollars that we're spending will really tell us if we're, if we're penetrating the, our own citizens and we're doing things right. So again, Mr. City Manager, I would, I would say let's make a valiant effort on the, on the parks and rec, on the trails and all the different plans I'm going through. We spent a ton of money, and some of those plans that I've read, like the CRA, was absolutely great, but we didn't prioritize things, you know? And so some things are, are right on and some things aren't. But if we're going to deviate from what the council before had voted on, then we should bring another plan back and say, yes, this is the way we're going, because we've got some big parks, and that was a lot of small. And we're doing, I don't know if you've read that plan, but pickleball was 48 out of 50 on the survey, and we're doing pickleball, from what I understand. And open spaces and, and places for picnic areas and stuff were very high, and we, and a lot of small parks. So if we're going to get away from that, I think there needs to be a discussion and take a little respite from new things and go back and let's look at what we're doing and, and really take a whack at, you know, what the priorities are from that standpoint.
Would it be possible for us to get a calendar of all the days that we would have access to the gym and like, if we have things scheduled for those days? Like even if it's for the past year, just so we can kind of see what value we are getting out of it, because it is an expensive endeavor? So I think kind of seeing where that value is and where we can get more value out of it is a great idea.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Carroll, absolutely. Mr. Walker did a report on the number of hours and number of participants some time ago, so we can refresh that, but those are completely appropriate questions, and yes, Mayor, these are policy issues that is the responsibility of the governing board, and when you have changes to the governing board, it's appropriate to relook at these things. While our master plans are more recent than many other jurisdictions, we've experienced a lot of growth, which requires some recalibration. I know one of the things I've talked to all of you about is look... I know one of the things I've talked to all of you about is looking at different models of community engagement and input. And I think I sent you a video on the Bowling Green model and how they were able to enlist more input, when you mentioned things like, and when you look at that survey, where pools ranked and where skate parks ranked and where pickleball ranked, I imagine if we went through that same process with a more elaborate approach, you'd get different results, which may guide your policy. And similarly, we have been operating under direction that is provide as many programs as possible at a net zero profit, which I think is what the public service is. But that's not how every municipality models things, because it doesn't include necessarily indirect cost allocations overhead, you know? So if you ask Pam what full cost recovery is and you ask Mike Walker what full cost recovery, you're going to see a difference.
Yeah, I think that's fully loaded, is what I was going to say when we got back to the, I think the hourly was based on the 100,000, not the total cost to the city of the 200, so.
Yeah, no, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Yes, I understood that. But I mean, the registration fees are really covering just direct costs.
Yeah. And the more, since we're already paying that, I mean, that's, whatever we have from here on out is a plus, right? Because that really is adding more dollars to the bottom line. So I appreciate you listening to that and I appreciate whatever we come back with on that. But yes, sir.
Some more questions?
We have a question from the, sorry.
No, I just wanted to add, as far as the gym usage, adding more programs, is that me? We currently are offering in between youth leagues, open gym three nights, three nights a week, a youth night, an adult night, and then a family night, as well as we did offer our first adult coed volleyball league. So the goal is to add more stuff there. Obviously, we do certain events, you know, back to school bash, anything we do, whichever direction we go each year for summer. But the goal is to offer more year round, whether it be at the gym, at Jimmy Thomas, the new South Lake Regional. So once South Lake Regional opens, we don't intend on no longer using the gym for programs. It's just how far we can stretch ourselves right now, so.
Well, you may be able to balance that labor off, because you're not spending any more money for any capital, because we already have the gymnasium, you know? So that money that you're taking in maybe, maybe could help that. But I really, I really hope that we do that. And while I'm on my soapbox, I'll say, I think the survey is really great and I think we really need to take a look at the survey, because that survey was done as I go back and look at the thing across all demographics within the city, where often the input that we get is from a certain demographic. And some demographics want more places to have picnics with their families and things like that. And, and I think we really, that's why we needed the master plan and we need to stick to that master plan or agree to move away from it, so that we're not just moving in one direction and not taking care of the city as a whole. So, and I'll get off my soapbox now with that.
And I'll get up on yours and just piggyback. Police and fire, do we have adequate training budget?
Travis walking around like a game show host.
I am better looking, so I'll go first. Yeah, we do have adequate training budgeted for, for next year. Yes, we believe through our dive team training, specialty training with the upcoming ladder truck being turned on. There's quite a few classes that need to be taken by quite a few people before we turn that ladder truck, the tower truck on. And then we have routine dive training that needs to happen. And as we move some of our rapid divers, I'm sure you're all familiar with that, up into the dive, search and rescue team, there are additional classes too. But at this point, we feel we did a good job pinpointing those needs in the budget development process. So I believe we're good on the fireside.
Before you give the mic to Chief Ramsey, do we have the best protective clothing or apparatus, whatever, that we can get for our department?
Apparatus and clothing, you said? So apparatus, yes, we have top of the line fire apparatus. It is comparable to other manufacturers that are out there on the market. The brand that we have stuck with provides a superior product. And when you're talking about ladder trucks and tower trucks, because they're constructed differently, unlike the other ladder and tower trucks, they're stronger, safer, have a little greater capability. But the fire engines themselves are same capabilities as other manufacturers and they are of newer technology. So yes, in that aspect.
Uniforms, disposable, disposable hoods, are we still using those?
Absolutely. So in terms of protective equipment, firefighting protective gear, the bunker jackets and pants and boots and the helmets, we have high quality gear through a reputable manufacturer. The heat resistance ratings and thermal ratings are very high. We pick components of our gear when we order gear. There's a lot of layers to ordering that protective gear. And yes, we do still provide the two firefighting Nomex hoods that go over their head that have a vapor layer. And all of that gear is designed to prevent skin contact with carcinogens as byproducts of combustion. So yeah, we do have, there may be some other things coming down the line with regards to the chemicals in those gears. But right now, we're using the same or similar to what all the other departments are. And they're on a rotating basis. We try to rotate gear out every five years from a primary to a reserve status with a 10-year service life.
What about the agitator? Is, I mean, we bought that before we moved into the new building. Is there a life expectancy on that unit? Is it being reserved for? Did we replace it?
I'm not sure I know what you're talking about. The bunker gear extractor, is that what you mean?
Is that what it is? Okay.
Yeah, so the extractor is a, an industrial washing machine designed for that bunker gear. After any type of exposure to hazardous chemicals, smoke, whatever from a fire, that gear gets bagged, brought back and is laundered in this specific machine. It's not a normal washing machine. We have a, it's serviced on a regular basis. We don't have a need to replace that now or in the near future. I will tell you, we do have one budgeted for Station 3. That is incorporating the cost of our new Station 3 that will be built here soon.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, while you have Deputy Chief there, I will remind the council and Deputy Chief was very diplomatic. There has been some new legislation which may require an industry-wide examination of the turnout gear and the protective gear. But currently, there is no supplier for those types of specifications. There will be a future cost implication and we're monitoring it.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because I also had plenty of time to read this last Sunday. I had it coming back from vacation. And there was an article in one of the magazines about special gear that you need to have for electric automobiles, that the, putting out fires and the different extraction devices and different training you need for electric vehicles than, than regular vehicles. Is that something that was just propaganda or?
No, not propaganda. Electric vehicles are a hot topic right now. There's more and more of those on the street and they present a unique hazards that you would not encounter with normal gas or diesel fueled vehicles. These large batteries that are, lithium ion batteries that are in these electric vehicles, once they start self-combusting, they don't, they don't usually go out. So yes, on the market, there are a number of products that are being peddled, some peddled, some legitimate, as an adjunct when you're fighting one of these fires and one of those types of vehicles. Doesn't change any of the protective equipment that we use. Technique changes. And what we use for now is we have, in days past, we'd use a firefighting foam that we would inject into the water and foam would come out. That foam, we've gone away from that foam. We have another product that is called an encapsulating agent. It's F-500 is the name of the product. And basically, it lowers and cools that battery so rapidly that it slows and can stop that progressive self-combustion of those batteries. And interestingly, our crews are sitting in a class with the state fire marshal right now with discussion on lithium ion battery fires.
Thanks. So we're prepared for that?
As much as we can. Once they go, sometimes you just got to let them go until they're done. If you don't get them early, it is what it is.
So the same question to Chief Ramsey with regards to protective gear hyphen adequate training.
Well, it's tough to follow Eric Deeman here. He's so well spoken and such a good-looking young man there. But nevertheless, yes, we have been blessed for the last eight years that I've been here. 2017, we came in, it was very challenging as far as providing additional training for these men and women in our law enforcement department here at the city. But since then, we really enhanced that. We recognize the importance of it. We've been very fortunate. There's grant funded opportunities as well. Historically, you see $35,000 to $40,000 worth of funds in training. And that's right off the top of my head, April, correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe historically, that's relatively where we've been. And there's also a per diem line, per diem in travel, because a lot of the travel that we send these officers to is out of our region, just because we want to send them the best training that we have. For instance, our crime scene investigators often go to Miami, Miami Metro. Why? Because that's some of the best crime scene training you're going to get. So in those situations, we want those individuals to have that training and have that capability. So we've been very fortunate. Council's always been very supportive of us. I would be cautious of in the future of any streamlining of rollover, as we're talking about, simply because you're seeing more and more agencies now going back, I say going back, because 35 years ago, when I started, it wasn't uncommon for the police department, the agency, to actually hire you, sponsor you and pay for you to go to the police academy. Since then, it pendulum went the other way. All of your candidates were certified and then came and applied. But now we're seeing that actually swing back the other way again, and to where these candidates are now being picked up uncertified, paid a small stipend while they go through the academy, and all those expenses are picked up by the agency. Just being more competitive.
So we go back eight years, and you know that I often ask pointed questions, what is it that's not in the budget that you need that's not in the budget?
What is it that's not in the budget?
What's not in the budget that if we could, and it's needed, programs, equipment?
I've had a discussion just this evening with the councilwoman, stability. That's what we need, stability.
Right. And then the last two questions will be for Mr. Heine. Are we getting our money's worth with Gray Robinson with the $60,000 a year cost? Are we getting our money's worth?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Radzick, I think absolutely. When you look at the amount of state appropriations, just that $2 million, just the one award in the last couple of months for the Sampey Road wastewater treatment plant, I can tell you that I would not have been able to get with our own human capital.
And who's doing procurement? So loaded question. If you're doing procurement, why do I have $10,000 in the budget for procurement?
We have an outside consultant that's assisting on doing the online bids and stuff right now until we finish the recruitment for the positions.
We use some TrackIt at all?
TrackIt's for building. We use Open Gov for the procurement, for where we put the bids out there on the streets. And that's where bidders put in their proposals and then we do the evaluations in there and keep track of all those documents.
And Mr. Mayor, the last is just a statement, because we don't necessarily have the people, but we have a very, very underutilized senior center and it has been underutilized for as long as I've been here. Yes, the seniors are out by 2, 3 o'clock, for the most part. And we've long, have many conversations about utilizing the senior center after hours for Microsoft Word training or office training or resume writing. And I know we got anointed, but we got an underutilized building there. My opinion.
Okay, well, Ms. Pike, you have anything else?
Mike, thanks for bringing up the senior center. I think I spoke with Mike Walker a couple of months ago about that. And correct me if I'm wrong, it's, though it is underutilized, but when it is utilized, am I wrong or correct in that? A lot of the folks that do come use it aren't Groveland residents. They come in from around Lake County. They come in on transport from around Lake County. So we do, for whatever our cost is there, we're, it's being expended outside of our city limits. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't, you know, operate that way. But I do find it a little, I found it a little, I don't know, off-putting that we're not letting our seniors know what opportunities might be there or open it to some things that are, I know they play bingo and they do things like that. I get it. But maybe trying to do something where our seniors that are not slightly incapacitated, like they come in on the Lake County transport, that we have something maybe a little bit more. I mean, I know we've got the talent show coming up and I'm not saying that. But I know that the museum did a dance at Lake David several months ago. And it wasn't well attended. But maybe there's some way we can try and get our arms around our seniors to try and do something where we can come in and use that building. And I know you're talking about training and things like that, but some social events where they may not have the opportunity in their neighborhoods to go out and do those kind of social fun events. So I'd had that discussion with Mike. I don't know whether, you know, where, you know, went out, but it was something that I was looking at and talking about. So thank you. Thanks for bringing it up.
So I turn 65 in a couple of weeks, so I'm probably going to start visiting the senior center.
Maybe they can train you on something.
Anything else?
No, again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Just wanted to make sure from a higher elevation, you understood the mechanics of how the mill policy decisions translate into mill rate adjustments. And again, we're able to recalculate based on whatever mill rate. But next week is the first reading and the public hearing.
And before the next reading, we'll talk to the staff and they'll talk to you and then we'll talk before that, right?
Just remember, $250,000 is one tenth of a mill. So when we start looking at expenses, that's what's going to move the needle.
I do have one more thing. So September 15, I saw a schedule that says the meeting is at 6:00 PM. Can we get a consensus to change that? I cannot be here at 6:00 PM. I will be working till 5:30 again, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, has that been published yet, however, for the second reading? Okay.
Beautiful. Let's fix it now then, before we do that. 6:30 is fine. Thank you.
Pam, do you have anything you want to say?
She wants to go home. It's her birthday.
Okay, seeing no other input, meaning adjourned. Thank you so much. It's 6:34, 6:38.